We have five. I'm just waiting for the microphone. All right, good evening, everyone. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of March 21st, 2024 was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 50 Nellis Driveway, New Jersey. Statement of compliance setting forth date, location, and time is ready in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and a roll call was taken. The meeting is recessed and is now being reconvened. Everyone, please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Dr. Tobek.
So, good evening, everybody. The board has several committee reports this evening, and Katie and Ava, our student representatives, have some exciting news from both of our high schools. Mr. Moffett will share his budget presentation, which is important and maybe not quite as positive as some of our other reports. We'll also be recognizing 10 retirees for their dedication and many years of service to the community and to the Wayne Township Public Schools. As a result, I will keep my comments brief this evening. Of course, the big news since our last meeting is that the referendum that was proposed to the community failed. Since then, many people have asked what's next and what that means for the school system's future. The Board of Education continues to hear feedback and has some ideas about how to collect more feedback from the community, while the referendum is still fresh in the minds of residents. With regard to what happens, this is the most, I'm sorry, this most recent referendum was largely tied to important facility work to preserve and maintain each of our schools. The best way to explain the referendum's impact is to share a relevant example from this community. In 2015, voters narrowly rejected another facility referendum, which had the single purpose of enhancing safety and security at each school. The short answer is that we do the best we can with what we have available in terms of funding and facilities. Since 2015, we've averaged about one school security upgrade per year, meaning that half of our schools still need these important upgrades. Progress with our facility projects will be slow. We'll continue to invest in Preakness School, although the small elementary school will accommodate only the first wave of new students who will be entering our schools once construction is complete at the Avalon Bay construction site. While the board may proceed with another referendum, there is no guarantees that it will pass. We will discuss this further when we get to Mr. Moffett's budget presentation, and I have no doubt some of our board members will have some comments of their own about the referendum. So, just a note about standardized testing. This is the time of the year when annual standardized assessments begin for students. This past week, our 11th grade students took the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, or NJGPA, at both high schools. The schools report that testing went smoothly, and our junior class has moved one step closer to fulfilling the graduation requirements. Also around the district, our multilingual learners are taking the annual Access 2.0 exam to assess their progress in English proficiency. That testing is nearly complete and will be wrapped up by the end of the month. We'd like to commend the teachers, counselors, and administrators who are preparing our students for success on all of these exams. As a reminder to parents, information on all required testing is included in our annual assessment notice to parents, which is located on our district website. A few quick notes for the public about the agenda. There's a resolution V2, Emergent School Resource, that might seem confusing. This is a request to appropriate 2022-2023 extraordinary aid, which is used to support our special needs programs with extraordinary costs. In this case, due to increased costs, we are seeking to use $280,246 of last year's extraordinary aid to support tuition for some of our students who attend our district schools. Also for the public, two resource items, '07 and '08, involve tuition. '07 is for the Early Childhood Program, while the other, '08, is for the Extended Day Program. The tuition for both programs is increasing by only 3% due to increased employment costs and overall inflation. Most are required to report that the 2022-2023 School Performance Reports, which will be available in April, include changes that respond to stakeholders' feedback, federal and state requirements, and data availability. In short, many of these changes mean that we are moving past COVID, and more reporting is possible now that we have standardized test programs back in place for the past few years. Parents and residents, you'll notice a change, for example, reporting student growth data as measured by median student growth percentile for the first time since the '18-'19 reports. Expanded computer science course participation data showing participation for all grades, kindergarten through 12, New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, NJGPA results, and results from the Fall ESA Accountability Process, a federal program which includes summative scores and identification status. For our HIB report, I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying events in the Wayne Township Public School District. There have been 16 incidents of HIB that were investigated since my last report, but only three of those cases were deemed to meet the criteria of actual HIB incidents. I'm also happy to report that at this time last year, we had 181 total HIB cases, while this year, we have 118, which is more than we would like, but this represents a 35 reduction in all cases. So, that's good news for the district. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Our student representative reports. Ava?
Over the past two months, the Wayne Hills Leo Club collected, paired up, and bagged 375 pairs of shoes, slippers, sneakers, and other footwear. These items were collected by a truck to be shipped overseas to third-world countries where micro entrepreneurs will refurbish their footwear and sell the shoes to support themselves, their employees, and their families. This benefits the planet by keeping the shoes out of landfills and also helps others earn a living. Great job, Leos! The Wayne Hills Photo Program won the Wayne Lifestyle Monthly Picture This High School Contest. This contest was open to all local high school students. New student images were published each month for the past six months. Wayne Hills won 18 of the 22 published photographs, including the first-place overall winner Christina Veprick, whose image appeared on the cover of the August issue kicking off the contest. Wayne Hills would like to thank Philip Barone and Wayne Lifestyle for creating this contest and allowing their students these opportunities. They look forward to participating again next year. Wayne Hills DECA students just returned from the most successful competition yet. Fifty-five student members competed in various business-related events. The Wayne Hills Chapter was awarded the highest-level Community Service Award for donating to Oasis Haven for Women and Children in Patterson. They received an award for participating and achieving an ethical leadership campaign as well as chapter recognition for the largest percentage increase of chapters in New Jersey. They grew from 56 members to 125 student members and 23 professional community members. Two of the Wayne Hills students were finalists in their respective events. Vivek Lemay in automotive services marketing and Maximo Gaetan in professional selling. Both received medals for their events. They also had one team of the top, they also had one team of students, Prajna Prakash and Olivia Kaplan receive a trophy for receiving one of the top-three test scores in the state of New Jersey for their integrated marketing campaign. Overall, they walked away with three plaques, two medals, one trophy, and a certificate of recognition for the largest chapter growth in New Jersey. And this organization has only been in Wayne Hills for four years. Now off, now they are off to ICDC Nationals with six officers that earned their spot in DECA Emerging Leader Academies. Congratulations to our Atlantic City FBLA Champions. Our FBLA award winners include first-place Ritvik Musani in Accounting One, first-place Nick Lowerkite in his sales presentation, second-place Santiago Gonzalez, Michael Masson, and Grayson Morales in Intro to Social Media Strategies, third-place to Manny Omar in Coding and Programming, Sean Sonny, Intro to Business Presentation, and fourth-place to Isabel Gill for Intro to Business Communication. The Wayne Hills Winter Guard and Wayne Hills Indoor Percussion have both been enjoying successful and energetic seasons. The Wayne Hills Indoor Percussion have competed several times at West Milford and Wayne Valley and have won last show at Whippany Park coming up in April. In their inaugural season, this new ensemble has placed second in the U.S. Band Standstill Percussion category, performing their show entitled "The Wheels of Time." The Wayne Hills Winter Guard has been performing their show, "Runes of Vaheva," throughout the state of New Jersey. The Guard has placed very well in the Scholastic Regional Aid Division of the Mid-Atlantic Indoor Network. Recently, the Guard took first place at the Bridgewater Raridan High School Guard Show. Finally, the Wayne Hills Symphonic Band had the opportunity to work with Dr. Eric Laprade in preparation for the upcoming North Jersey Region One Concert Band Festival. The band rehearsed with Dr. Laprade, who is the Director of Bands at the College of New Jersey, for two hours, getting his interpretation and suggestion for improvement that they will be performing. We are proud of the accomplishments of all these fine ensembles. Wayne Hills Girls Basketball Player Sienna Schuster scored her 1,000th career point on February 10th against Passaic High School. Sienna has been selected as First Team All County in All League. Her team also won the Passaic County Championship for the first time since 1982. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Catherine?
On March 7th, Wayne Valley was visited by two notable alumni. Ryan Van de Mark, offensive lineman for the Buffalo Bills, and Dr. Festa, a sports psychologist affiliated with the Buffalo Bills, both met with current students to share their experiences. Their presentation offered advice on how they got to where they are today and how the right mindset can help anyone accomplish their goals. This month, the Wayne Valley Quiz Bowl team finished in the top eight teams of the Quiz Bowl tournament and are on their way to the semifinals. Congratulations to Eddie Chen, Gavin Chen, Shan Negaranda, Skylar Urina, and sophomore captain Ari Barnes for their hard work. The Wayne Valley Senior Fashion Show kicked off at 5:30 on March 13th with almost 700 people in attendance. The event included a Tricky Tray Raffle, in which attendees tried their luck at winning various prizes, including a blow-up hot tub. Seniors dazzled the runway in pairs before all walking at once in matching t-shirts. Physical education ALPS leaders, who assist in PE classes that participate in project adventure, recently took a field trip to NJ Rock Gym. They had the exciting opportunity to put their skills, which include rock wall climbing and belaying, to the test. Wayne Valley participated in Makers Week this month. Students had the opportunity to visit the Media Center, where they found various stations set up with STEM activities. These included Lego, magnet tile, Kiva plank, science experiments, and K-Nex building. There were also art-related activities, such as painting, clay, 3D pen projects, jewelry making, digital art on the Wacom ONE tablets, and more. The Wayne Valley Media Center received a grant from NJ STEM Pathways this year, allowing them to buy more materials for students. This month, three Wayne Valley artists won Best in Category at William Patterson University's Art Star Exhibition, a juried student art showcase. Congratulations to Halatura for her photograph titled "Love Over Power," Geraldine Calderon for her digital art named "What's Inside," and Gabriella Battelli for her drawing called "Memory Bubbles." Junior Aiden Kindler, a Wayne Valley photo student, was published on the cover of Wayne Lifestyle Magazine's March issue. His photo is of a football on the Wayne Valley Field called "Eyes on the End Zone." Congratulations to these creative students. Mr. Rozell's sophomore chemistry class carefully manipulated fire in an experiment to test the distinct color signature that different metals produce when exposed to heat energy. Wearing protective aprons and goggles, students tested out different metals by placing them inside a flame and observing the vibrant reds, oranges, and blues they produce. Students were excited to experience firsthand the amazing characteristics of different metals, some of which are used in fireworks. Mrs. Vaca's U.S. History I and Rich classes presented their social reform projects this week in class. After learning about the social reforms of the 19th century, such as temperance and abolition, students were tasked with creating their own contemporary reform movement. The purpose of this project is for students to identify an issue and create a solution for a better community. This helps to foster good citizenship practices and permits students to express themselves creatively. Students have selected an issue of their own choosing, researched it, and created their own organization to solve the problem they address. These organizations have their original logos, agendas, mission statements, and awareness campaigns. Their topics ranged from aiding those with wrongful convictions to women's health and environmental conservation. Wayne Valley Girl Swimmer Sarah Rodriguez won the NJSIAA State Championship in the 100 Backstroke and broke the state record with a time of 52.54 seconds. Sarah also placed second in the state in the 200 Freestyle, just missing two state championships by .18 of a second. Congratulations to her for her hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. Moffett, this is our second public input on the budget.
That's better? Okay, so tonight is the second public input session on the budget. If you look on your agenda, it's under O, School Resource-Finance. It's number nine, tentative budget resolution. That'll prove for submission to the county office. Little overview on the presentation, as people have watched in the past, it's very similar. The process is similar. We'd like to just give you a nice overview. It's, again, it's submitted to the county office after it's taken a vote on. If it's approved, it goes to the county office for review and approval, by which we then can then provide more advertisement and more information in those papers, as well as on our website. But tonight is a tentative budget review. Real quick, I'll just start with, the district continues to be in a very strong overall position. As of June 30, we look pretty healthy. If you look at our surplus position, it's $3.9 million. It's, if not right up against a 2% that we're required, or we can have a maximum, and it's something that the board has worked very hard to continue to maintain over time. So, again, that's 2%. We're statutorily allowed to keep a reserve, and that helps us offset some unforeseen costs. Another area is our capital reserves, both reserves, the capital and maintenance reserve. Again, it's a very important element to what the board has done over the number of years, 10 years at least, where we are able to build reserves to help us in the event that there are things that are unforeseen in our facilities. So, capital reserve, you see here, we entered this fiscal year at 6.5-ish million dollars, and that helps us address the needs of our facilities. With the Preakness Envelope Project, we withdrew 4.3, and what we intend to continue to withdraw is about 1.8. So, when you make that adjustment, the capital reserve at the end of the period, again, we're estimating to the end of the year, it's about $2 million, 1.8 million. Maintenance reserve is also a good thing to have, and that's what we maintained. We haven't used it this year, but we're going to continue to have this in reserve at 2.3. And that allows us to really deal with things that come down the line. And as we determined this year is, we have some concerning trends that have developed, and it has to do with retaining employees, paying salaries and benefits, and adjusting our budgets to accommodate special ed needs. So, that's a trend that we're watching. Why is it important? Because it is in a position where it will have an impact and potentially, we may use surplus to cover some, as you heard this evening, the extraordinary aid is being allocated this year, which will allow us to deal with some of those unforeseen costs. So, it's, again, it's healthy to have this, and it's hard work for the budget process to maintain, but it's also a big initiative that the board has maintained over 10 years. So, that is a good position to be in for any type of unforeseen problems in the future. Important dates just to highlight, you're here tonight, so, like I said, we'll approve it tonight. If it's approved, it goes on the county office, they review it. If it's approved, we can advertise, and then we have a public hearing, which is official adoption of the budget, and that'll happen in May 2nd. Some of the big appropriation drivers, as I spoke about quickly, 2023, 2024, we've seen a lot of expansion in services, so we're looking at about $2 million there. Related to that is our transportation, which is also supports the specialized nature and locations of the students we send out of district, and employee benefits continue to increase over time. We were also watching facility and technology needs through the year. Again, appropriations were concerned about, again, salary and benefits, just looking at the straight push, you're looking at $9.4 million. We have to absorb a lot of that into our budget, with other things pushed out and things that are needed. So, we're very concerned about some of the needed areas in special service and transportation. Again, this is all part of the process we use to make this year's budget. So, what does that mean? Tax levy cap is our increase on our tax levy, that's 3.3. This, again, is on the revenue side. We also received, as advertised in the paper, $1.8 million in increased formula aid. The state of New Jersey continued to address some of the allocations related to the state aid and increased enrollment and wealth of various communities, so we are on the positive side. I think in the newspaper today, there was a lot of other districts in Passaic that are on the other side, where they've reduced their funding over time. So, with this state aid increase, the health benefits contributed to an additional $616,000 for an adjustment on a tax levy, as well as an enrollment increase. These are some of our initiatives that have been retained in our school's district budget, either centrally or at the school level. I-ready, various different textbooks, history algebra at the high school. We were able to fund four new positions to an elementary, because we see an enrollment increase in that area, as well as our preschool program. So, these two FTEs would be related to an expansion to cover the Preakness School and that program there, as we continue to expand, as well as provide resources for additional classrooms that we're building out and bringing online in the future. Lease purchase application, we've done this every year. We've gotten into a cycle for a lot of different areas. Student technology, technology upgrades district-wide, that's all part of that. It's the biggest portion of the lease purchase. Again, this is a five-year type of lease approach that we do through PCIA, so we have the computers on that. We also have some passenger, I should say, school buses, 22-passenger, 54-passengers, again, things that cycle out, we have to replace due to regulations, so we have that. We have some vehicles, as well as district equipment needs, which right now seems to be the custodial area. We have a lot of equipment come and do, so we had to cycle it out, because it just, we can't repair a lot of it. Reserve accounts, this has to do with our facilities, again, capital reserve, maintenance reserve. Just want to just reassure the board that we continue to move forward in some of these areas, so capital reserve, we're moving forward with Preakness Envelope Project, which we took a withdrawal out for the 4.3 and received a rod grant. We have this elevator ADA project that hasn't been funded and hasn't been approved by grants, so we don't know if that'll be something we'll have to not move forward with in the future, but administration will review it and will make a recommendation in the future. Maintenance reserves, again, the things that we've talked about over the last few months, rod grants. Again, we're going to do some roofs still. We're going to do a chimney flue breach, as well as some communication upgrades at Skylar Kofax. That's where the revenue is generated from, so you see a lot of it, the big blue area is the tax levy, which is property taxes, so you can see that's 90.5% of the revenue, with a small portion, about not even 9% from the state. This is the appropriation side or the expenditure side. Biggest portions, you can see, are academic programs, employee benefits, and student supports. So, you see 44% in academic programs, 20, a little over 22% in employee benefits, and student support services, 11.47. And I just want to point out, facilities, again, we continue to pay around 10%, it's just about 9.5% here. So, we still are funding our maintenance, required maintenance, and upkeep on our facilities. This is the estimated tax impact, so we got updated numbers. So, you see for an average assessed value home is now $230,435. That generates an annual increase of $204. This was a little bit of a surprise to me in my office, so we did a little research on this, and we noticed that the ratables did fluctuate from last year to this year. We lost about $35 million in commercial property value, meaning the assessed value. So, there's a shift from the commercial ratables over to industrial and residential. So, we saw a shift there, and that's the reason why this is a little bit higher than what we thought last year. I think we were coming in 160, maybe 158 estimated, so that's really what caused a lot of the difference, because it is a smaller dollar mouth when you compare it to last year. Now, I also like to point out that you do have, I know we've been talking about it as a board for a while, 116 for the Anthony Wayne drop-off. So, when you net that against the $204, you're looking at $88 impact when you look from your actual in-the-mail type of property tax bill. So, if you net 116 against the $204, you get $88. That's an overall summary of the major areas of a budget. Just want to point out that each board member has in front of them a copy of the presentation, a Q&amp;A on a tentative budget, as well as a one-page summary. That one-page summary would foot to this. Again, you have the tax levy increase, about 2.48%, that's a push of about a little over $4 million. Again, the state aid that I spoke about, the operating budget is $189 million, and that's our day-to-day operation. You have non-public and federal dollars there. We do have a charter school student, so we had the budget for that. It's only one, so it's $16,000. And the debt service tax levy is now zero, because the 2.6 from last year drops off, and that makes the 190 when you compare it to last year. It's a drop of about $6.5 million net, again, a reduction of 3.25, but that's from two things. One is the drop-off in the debt service, as well as the transfer from reserves for that Preakness. So, you have $4 million plus the two, so you're there. That's the main reason. Next steps, again, prove tonight, goes out to county office. They have a chance to ask us questions. They can suggest some changes. I might have to revisit the board submitted documents. We have to, we send a whole package tomorrow morning, it's like that big. We send it to the county with all the support they need, as required. We can, as a board, also make adjustments to that, so as I have said in other meetings, this is a very difficult budget cycle, and we're still discussing administratively strategies to continue to find savings, to continue to allow for coverage for salaries and benefits to some of the areas that I'm uncomfortable with, because there are some areas that we have some projections that are a little bit higher than we have in the budget. So, that'll be something that we continue to maintain focus on as this budget year opens and progresses in the future. But again, they approve it, the county, then we advertise it, and we then talk about it again and consider for adoption in early May, May 2nd. Now, I'd like to spend a little bit of time on budget trends and facilities. I know there's a little bit of aftermath of the outcome of the referendum, so I just want to kind of go over a couple, some bullet points. So, the first bullet point here is funds available, and these are things that we generate through savings. Maybe some of our projections are higher than anticipated, and the net effect is you have available funds. So, the first bullet, last year, we had 5.6. We're expecting maybe to come in around 2.5. So, that's the trend I'm talking about that makes me uncomfortable, because if we don't generate, we don't have funds available to address a lot of our facility needs, as we've indicated to the general public. The second bullet point has to do with the struggle. These are struggles that we've had this year to cover salary lines for various coverage, and I would say the outcome of having a shortage of teachers and having to attract qualified candidates and finding long-term subs and regular subs. So, those are some of the areas that's been a struggle to do that. So, with that, our project, our projected capital reserve, again, is that $2 million. Again, it's stable. We don't want to move forward, we want to keep that in the bank, as they say, so we have a reserve to really help us out in any of the areas that we have going, like the rod grants, which is the third bullet. So, we do have motion on those rod grant projects. We're going to make some determinations, but really, that available capital budget will be to help that, those projects move forward in the event that they have unforeseen expenses. Again, not to go over too quickly, but T-Day partial roof, APT partial roof, Ryerson, the Hills Boiler again, Skylar Kofax Communication, and Fallon facade. The fourth one down is the Generation, Next Generation Science Lab, which is a big program that's been probably running for over, I guess, eight years. We've been able to successfully renovate 10 science rooms and two at each, or five at each high school with two prep rooms, so a total of 14 rooms that we were able to modify and renovate in that science lab program. So, that will, recommendations to pause on that, so we don't take money out of that $2 million. So, we're going to pause it. Hopefully, in the near future, we'll be able to go back to that. I know we have made some investments in planning for the next phase, but my recommendation is to hold at this time. And the facility budget, the actual department budget, is going to be refocused to just deal with health and safety concerns as we move forward. So, that's another area of the budget that was, is troubling. But again, it's less resources for some of the upgrades, I'll say, and just more to just deal with the day-to-day. just deal with the day-to-day plumbing fixes, electrical fixes, roofing-type issues. So that's what we're going to be doing a little bit more of in the near future. So a district needs, prekness doesn't go away. So we've had a plan in place, which the referendum was part of. It wasn't the only thing that we've done before that we went out and after. So we've been planning, and we talked about the 4.3 withdrawal. We're going to continue to renovate the inside. I should say, restore the instructional space. We've already worked on the four classrooms in the middle floor. And as we do the roof windows and pointing and lentils, we'll then do the top floor, and that's another four classrooms we'll bring online. We already moved out upstairs, so we're ready to go and move forward. A lot of, I know the facility committee met, and we talked about it a little bit. We've done a lot of the research and moving forward with that project, prekness. And once that top floor is finished, we plan to then focus on the bottom floor, which we're going to look at a kitchen, a warming area, cafeteria seating, and then potentially a small group instruction, and maybe some storage areas down at that bottom floor. But that would be the next step. Now, beyond that, that just brings maybe four classrooms online at prekness. So the next step is going to be, we're exploring potentially leasing or maybe buying another property. There's some opportunities we think are in the community, so we're going to continue to work on that second step, which if we can't absorb the current enrollment that comes out of the new developments with those eight classrooms or reconfiguration of that school, then we would have that other backup, and we're working on that now as we speak. So again, it's not like the referendum was the only portion of this. As you see, we've taken out online over the past, since I've been here. We turned it into an ECC. We pulled everybody back from the individual schools, and we keep on utilizing. This is, again, a key. I've said this before, this is key to that side of town and the enrollment. And I know you've heard it a lot in the past couple of months. District needs, new referendum. So that was, as we said many times, had advertised, it's 370. Again, if you did the 116, you're at 254. Now, the question is now, I'm hearing, and I know the board had asked to kind of look into it, cursory, $100 million. If we look at it, I had our financial advisors run a quick calculation based on the same type of principles and assumptions we made on 170-ish, and it comes up with a difference of $37 a year, and that comes down to $3 a month. And the third bullet really kind of explains that. We lost, and again, that's been very important, the board has always said, I know I said a couple of public meetings, to soften the tax impact over time, soften the blow, if you like to call it that. And we had a level investments, right? So you had the 116. The idea was it was soft, right? You lose that now. So now you lose 116, the floor, you know, goes farther, and you don't have 116. So then you have the whole increase. Not only do you have that, as much as I have the assumption of 37, there's this pressure that depending on what type of projects you select and potentially, if that percentage of debt service aid reduces, for example, if you take the $44 million project for the new prekness school, as is, it's $44 million, and you put it into 100, obviously, the percentages pushed down because that wasn't as eligible as other projects. So that would mean the impact would increase, and that differential would squeeze. So I would venture to say, a lot of the scenarios that we're going to be faced with will probably put us almost to the dollar. I mean, it's going to be a negligible difference. So we kind of lost that opportunity. Unfortunately, we kind of lost $70 million in total built out. So that's three. Four, the timeline, there has been some discussion on different types of timelines. If there are changes to any of our projects, in other words, if I talk to our architects, they have their experience. So if they know that petroleum has increased over time substantially, and the budgets they submitted and with our applications were higher, and they want a chance to adjust that, so we don't have to short the project, and we can correct the budget now, they would make that recommendation and change to our application. Another change would be just pure escalation. Common industry standard is 2% to 5% escalation by year, but for certain types of projects it may be more, that might be something the architects would suggest us resubmitting and change, an update, as well as what we want to package. Maybe we want to package windows differently at different locations of the town, split them up. They might have some advice there. Again, that would be a change. We would have to package them up differently. But in those changes, that would cause us to pretty much be 10 to 12 months timeline. Could there be some savings on time, a here a month, there a month? Possible. And then the times are different, right? You have a different, the Department of Education currently says about six months. I think we were able to do it in five. Maybe we could do it in five. But again, if it's changes and we have to do that, that would be a longer turnaround. So we have that. So we have one or two months with the board, three months with the architect, six months with the Department of Ed, and then you have, depending on when you go out, it could be 60-day requirement or 75-day requirement on the general election. And again, that would all be a cost that we'd have to bear, and that would have to be put into a new budget, a future budget. So that's all something that we can concern ourselves with. Yeah, so can we do it faster if we just take everything off of what we have now and take the risk of the inflationary side of things and want to do that and pick through it? We could probably do it for less time, but, you know, the recommendations, I think, from a lot of your professionals may say otherwise. And I think that is pretty much it. I don't know if the board has any quick questions. Any questions? Long questions, quick questions?
Since we have new board members, my question was that we say we're, this is for approval of the tentative budget and maximum travel expenditure. So I guess, can we talk about the internal budget process, that we have opportunities to ask questions, and that this is not the final budget that will go on? I kind of wanted to, if we can lay it out for the new board members. Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, so the budget in the business office, we're constantly looking at it. We're building it one cycle to another. So once it really is approved, we then open it for use. So if it's approved and adopted, we may open it up late May, early June, and we start using that budget as the other one's closing out. But while that happens, my office sits and we take on, we build that next year. It's the base salary year, so you have to work your base. So you have 12-month employees that you then string your budget, and you confirm everything that you have now, because you might have retirements. So then you do your 12 months, and in September, you build in your 10-month employees, and that's your base. You confirm that with research by November. So my office is constantly in touch with that. We start doing projections around the same time, in late November, early December. And then we're ready to do the internal work. Now, internal work, as you mentioned, at the finance committee, we talk about our budget plan, we talk about some appropriation drivers, things that we're concerned about. We talk about revenues. I try to solicit type of feedback from the board. That feedback is received, and we then start the budget process internally around, really before we break for the holidays. So the principals are asked to submit budgets, so they go into our financial software package, and they sit with staff, craft the budget. They're given guidance from the business office. They create it. It's due in January, and if there are big items, we're talking about it in finance committee. As the school budgets are coming in and being reviewed, we also sit down with department heads and go through their budgets, as well as look at the biggest component, which is pretty much 80% of our budget is the salaries, right? We continue looking at salaries. We look at projections, because the next big hurdle to get over for budget projections with salaries has to do with the holiday break, because you're paying a lot of stipended positions like coaches, right? So you want to make sure you get half of the coaches in there. So then towards the end of January, we're putting the budget together, and we're waiting for the all-important state aid notice, which tells us how much we receive or don't receive. And again, I report that out to the board. I then finish all that information, and we start presenting it this way. So I think I'm kind of doing a long-winded one, and I'm trying to be short and sweet, but I'm not sure I hit the exact point.
So, quick question to follow up to that. So if board members and/or public had input on how to maybe review certain programs that we have and maybe, you know, switch up the priorities, we still have plenty of time to address it before we approve the final budget?
Correct. So, yeah, so after I submit it to you, it's here tonight. Like I said, it goes into the county office. It's not only open for them to make suggestions and require changes, but if there's any thing, like you said, either from board members, administrators, because we're going to be sitting, continue to sit down with administration to find areas of savings. If there's areas of savings that we can identify and modify our budget, we can do that. We can do that all the way up until the budget hearing. They'll approve it, I think, around April 20 deadline. We can change it up to 20th, and then after the 20th, as long as we report out at the public hearing, we can make adjustments. Again, they have to be reviewed and approved by the county, but they will allow you to make changes. So if that, particularly if there's something that happens from now until May 2, yes, we'll be able to address that and take it under consideration.
Anyone else? Matt?
Mr. Moffett, I've been on this board for four years, and I've known you for four years, and never once have I ever heard you utter the words troubled or worried, ever. When I first came on, I was looking for those words, especially when I sat on the finance The defeat of the referendum is now going to basically have consequences, whether you like to know it or not. Of the 61 approximate jobs that we're going to place into the referendum, how many of those are we going to continue and go on and do anyway, approximately?
Let me answer.
A ballpark is all we're looking for.
Honestly, the items that I looked, that you see tonight, those are the ones moving forward. I'm recommending no other withdrawal from any of the reserves to do anything more than that until we see a different. See, when we close out this year, it's going to be very telling. We'll see if my projection of 2.5 is there. If it's a little more, then that's good. If it's a little less, that's bad, right? But if those projections come to fruition, then that's a concern, because going from 5.6, which has generated, because it was higher than that in prior years, that helped us fund all those projects, we just don't have that type of trickle effect, if I could say, but allows us to do onezies, twzies, meaning if I had a $2 million project and I had $8 million in a reserve, then I would maybe recommend that we take $2 million and deal with one of the ones on the list, which would be prioritized. If that's what you're asking me, is short-term, I'm saying pause on all those type of projects. And then the only way we would do it farther term would be is if we start seeing a larger increase in those deposits to both reserves, then I may come to the board at a later date and recommend something off of the list already identified.
So, once again, the word uttered that came out of your mouth was concerned, and that's something I've never heard from you before. Just to confirm it, we are actually not going to continue at Wayne Valley with the next-generation science labs. We have to, as you said, pause it. So right off the bat, because we've got top priorities and things like windows and student safety, we now have to cut into an academic program because the referendum was voted down here. You then went ahead and rehashed one, and let's go and do a $100 million referendum. So I'll be up here to tell everybody right now, executive or not executive, I'm not voting for that to be done again. We've already had three referendums in my recent memory that have been shot down by this town. I'm not wasting another $300,000 to put it back up for us to get slapped down on this again. Unfortunately, the facilities has to be taken care of. So if you don't want to take care of facilities, it's going to hit us in academics, it's going to hit us in probably eventually athletics or other extracurricular places, because student safety, student health, those are number one and number two. And then comes our academics, number three. And if they're not handled, then this is why we even here doing this. So thank you for everything you've done, sir. I know you've got a lot of real hard work, again, coming up. You've got some really tough decisions on what we're keeping and what we're not keeping coming up. You've lost any wiggle room anywhere. Teachers are retiring. We've got 10 of them tonight, or a combination of them. They're not coming in at a two-for-one deal. They're only coming and asking for more money at every place. It's not just Wayne, it's the county, it's the state, it's the nation, dare I even say the world in this case. Education is, you know, was coming to it. So now we've got to take our 80% of whatever we're putting in here and throw more to the teachers, so we can keep that A-plus in academics. And you've got to figure out, okay, where are we going to cut it now here? So all I have to say at this point is, thank you, Mayor Vergano. You did great. Thank you, Mr. Moffett. You really did do great.
Anyone else?
I have some questions. The project you showed about the rod grants, they're not fully funded by the grants, correct?
The grants, they're not fully funded by the grants.
So we're spending, and we heard this over the last few months, oh, you put no money into your infrastructure. Why do we spend it? Why do we need all this now? We're putting close to $9 million in our infrastructure, just with those rod grants. Right? And you know what the telltale sign was the pie chart? And the most disgusting thing on that pie chart was the 8% in state aid that we get. Wow. Eight cents on every dollar comes back to you, the taxpayer. Then you have $35 million reduction in ratables. That's a big number. I know everybody pounding their chest on that one. This budget is concerning. It's concerning in a lot of different ways. You know, our special ed costs are through the roof, and we have no choice in a lot of places. I think in the last two months, five students in the district was, five new students moved into the district, special need, six, all added district placements. The average added district placement costs us anywhere between $50,000 and $70,000 per student, plus at least another $15,000, and I'm going conservative with this one, on transportation, per student. We have to give those students what they need. I'm not advocating not. So when you start looking and cutting this and dicing this up, I'm concerned. And I've sat up here a while, and other than the year the infamous Governor Christie cut our state aid from $8 million to $125,000, did I start seeing numbers like this? And it's got to happen. We have to do what we have to do. The building is not stopping and continues to go. And who knows now with this new law they passed with the housing, how it's going to affect us? Believe me, I'm not confident in what they did, because every time they do it, they just foul it up even more, and we end up having to pick up the pieces on our end here, and the implications of it. And the mayor said it himself. He goes, you need to build a new school. Okay? I'm willing to sit down and listen. But thank you for what you've done, and hopefully, I know there's going to be cuts coming to other things. This is not going to be the end, because there's too much money that needs to be made up now to go into these projects that we have no choice to do. We didn't make the bed. It was made for us, and now we have to pick up the pieces. At this time, we'll open the portion of the meeting for citizens to comment on agenda items only. Residents are asked to state their name and address and subject matter. Comments may be made, be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under old business.
Mr. President?
Do I have a mover?
Before you call, may I read the revisions?
Oh, yes.
Excuse me, revisions to tonight's agenda?
Just one second. I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right. So we have a few changes. So under T-emergent human resources, we're going to remove something from number three, approval of rescinded items, and we'll remove item number two, Kevin Boonstra, B-O-O-N-S-T-R-A. We're also going to remove items from number 12, which is approval of transfers. So those items are number one, Kevin Boonstra, B-O-O-N-S-T-R-A. Number two, M-I-S-E-R-E-T, first name, last name, B-A-N-U-S-I. And number three, Ermilda, is E-R-M-I-L-I-N-D-A Campos. Moving on under X-emergent school resource legal. Two items to be added tonight will be number one, X1, approval of administrative leave and return. That action reads as follows, that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approves administrative leave for employee number 1331 from March 11.
11th to March 22nd, 2024, for good cause, returning on March 25, 2024. We'll also add item X2, which is approval of termination. That action reads as follows, resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approves the termination of employee ID number 9070, effective April 19, 2024, for just cause. That concludes the changes to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a mover to open to the public? Mr. Giordano? Mr. Batterhill? Mr. Freezwick, thank you for your patience, sir. No problem. Jim Freezwick, 1212 Summer Hill Road. I was very disappointed that the school bond referendum was defeated. I voted for it. I had confidence in the board, the board's judgment on that issue. But unfortunately, it was defeated and it was defeated soundly. It was actually a landslide defeat. 63% voted against it and only 37% voted in favor of it. I'm here to ask that the board put another bond referendum in place next March. I think we, we need, we need, you know, we need another bond referendum to fund our school system. I have some suggestions on where you can cut in order to reduce the amount of the second bond referendum. It seems to me you're going to have to cut out that new school for $44.9 million because you're going to have to fix your existing schools before you build a new one. That's my feeling. You could also cut out the Wayne Valley and Wayne High School bleachers, provided the engineer tells you that they're not in danger of collapsing in the next 10 years. That would be a total cut of $55.7 million, bringing the new bond down to 114.1 million. But you'd still be entitled to state aid in the approximate amount of 35.3 million, which would reduce the amount to be funded by Wayne taxpayers down to 78.8 million. Under the bond referendum that was defeated, that called for 130.8 million to be funded by taxpayers. So that would be a reduction of $52 million to be funded by taxpayers or a 40% reduction. That's my proposal. You know, I don't see how the, the school system can survive without borrowing money. And unfortunately, or maybe fortunately from some people's perspective, you can't just bond, you have to get the voter's approval to bond. Unlike the municipality, which can, the mayor can get five votes of the council to pass a bond ordinance and they borrow the money. Board of Education can't do that. You have to get voter approval to borrow money. And sometimes it's absolutely necessary to borrow money. You can't fund a school system of this size just on your annual budgets. It can't be done. There has to be capital improvements to the school system. And so I'm asking the board to try again next year, next March, with a reduced version. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on an agenda item?
Stuart Resmer, 82 New Street. Mr. Pavlak, you've been, you've been around long enough to know that this is the time of year when I usually show up at these meetings, and it's precisely over these budget discussions. And I too want to thank the administrator for the work you do and also the rest of the staff. I'm always, I'm always appreciative of what you folks do to turn in these budgets. And I think what's happened with the referendum is absolutely reprehensible. Again, what the mayor did just, just floors me. I, I listened to the council meeting last night, and if you heard what he had to say, the first thing he did do was he practiced character assassination on, on Mrs. Kazan. He went right into it, you know, accusing her of this, that, and the other thing. I thought it was ungentlemanly. I thought it was beneath the office of the mayor to take that tack. He made some remarks against Mrs. Putup, who is, you know, one of your associates, you know, retired teacher. You know, but that's all water under the bridge now. What he said last night was, is he's going to help you, he's going to give you staff to go through this. What he's going to say is he's going to have discussions with you. And as you remember, the last time I was here, I asked whether or not he called ahead to tell you what he was going to do when he torpedoed that referendum. Well, now he wants to help out. He wants to do that and he wants to do this. So I got to say to you, and I'm, I'm not being a smart aleck about it, what are you doing here? He's, he's going to run everything. He's going to run the table, he's going to run the game, he knows better than you, he knows better than me, he knows better than Dr. Toback and Mr. Moffett. Who needs you, in his view? He's going to do this. He's done irreparable damage to this district, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know how you picked this up, as Mr. Freezwick just said, and as you've just said. And you, sir, you're talking about whether or not you're going to spend this kind of money to do another referendum. I remember two weeks after the Sandy Hook massacre, that 1,835 people voted down that referendum for safety and security of this district's students. And I was floored that the voters of Wayne, New Jersey did that. The numbers are pathetic. I have heard 9.3% during the last election, I'm sorry, the last midterm was the number, then it went up to 12.5 last night, or last week it was 19%. Those are still pathetic numbers. The idea that the parents didn't show up in greater numbers and show up here, where I was the only person from the public that spoke that night, is astonishing to me. So they're going to get what they deserve. They're, you know, the government, they deserve, as they say, that saying goes. And that's no, that's no panacea to the problem, is it? These problems are real for you. So again, I want to thank you folks for the budget. I come here and I take that stack that's left over out of that table every, every time you do this, and I go around my neighborhood. And, you know, before I go to bed at night, I deliver those to the people whether they want it or not. Not one of those people in these 10 years has ever stopped me on the street to say, hey, thank you, or to, or to ask me about what this other line item is, to which I would say, well then come down or watch it on TV. Carry on, everybody.
Thank you.
Good evening. It hurts me to hear that the progress with the next-gen science labs cannot move forward, given the budget predicament that we are in. I think not only do we have a local problem, but the state of New Jersey on a whole is doing a really poor job of supporting public education equitably throughout the state. I don't come down on Abbott districts, having worked in one at the beginning of my teaching career, because they need as much assistance as they can get. But when Passaic is given $300 million to build a brand-new high school, there was also the article in Tap into Wayne regarding the monies in New Brunswick to build state-of-the-art high school with science labs. As said by Mr. Freezwick, the mayor can just pass an ordinance and bond something. Passaic County Vocational Technical Institute is a beautiful campus. They have a relatively new STEM academy. They're building a brand-new medical arts facility. And they go to the county commissioners and they get permission and that goes out to get bonded. But the suburban districts throughout New Jersey have to go to the voters and say, oh, please, more? You know, like something out of Oliver Twist, and it's disgusting. My sister is on the school board outside of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. When they want to renovate their high schools or new parking fields or a new stadium, they don't have to go to the voters. So I don't understand why it is so lopsided in this state. Maybe the, what the things we can do is lobby our state government to assess the problem and try to come up with a more equitable solution. Because the solution as it is now, pitting voter against voter within a town, is absolutely disgusting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
My name is Gabriel Nasiola. I live at 1260 Ratsa Road. I almost hesitate to say that again because the last time I was here, I just thought I was giving citizen feedback, but apparently it caused some member of your audience to send me some threatening mail, which I had to take to the attention of the police department and the post office. I don't put too much fear in it because it's, from what was contained inside this envelope, and based on what I said, that only thing that was a negative thing, I think, the person who sent this was probably an employee of the contractor that built Anthony Wayne Living, Middle School. As you recall, I said, instead of including, correcting the sinking foundation or whatever is at Anthony Wayne Middle School and putting it on the backs of the taxpayers, I simply said, perhaps you should sue the contractor who did the job. I mean, to me, that was, that's the way the world works today. You pay somebody to do something, you don't like what they do, you sue them. Everybody gets sued. Generally speaking, I would say, in just common taxpayer viewpoint, you guys and gals made the citizens, or tried to get the citizens, to bite off more than they could chew. $169.8 million was outrageous. My thoughts in general were, first of all, boards of education, like municipalities, should, or I don't know how they do it or what the procedures are, have some capital reserve for things like you guys put in this bond referendum. They have maintenance budgets to take care of things that should be maintained by our maintenance department, not the subject of bond referendum. That's just my common sense point of view. I think what the mayor did was to reveal some things that perhaps you, in your presentation, should have included. First, I'd like to comment, Mr. Moffett, you must ride a motorcycle or something because you talk so fast, I don't know who could understand what you're saying. I mean, you know, I'm sure you know what you're talking about, but to somebody that's just trying to listen, much too fast, man. Slow down. I think the most critical thing that you had in your bond referendum was in anticipation and looking to the future, that we're being bombarded with affordable housing regulations and we're going to get bombarded much more with the new regulation. We have areas of the town that are going to need to be developed and are going to be developed, some in the process already. We're going to have more kids. You're going to need more school space. And that's preferable to redistributing and bouncing everybody around. Just you hit one nail on the head with the hammer and you'll be prepared for more students. I don't know what to say, it's just that you sold the thing, or attempted to sell the thing, on the idea it was going to cost $370 for the next 25 years. It was mentioned, I think, that $2.6 million, the last payment on the Anthony Wayne Middle School project was going to come. What wasn't mentioned, but was mentioned by the, by the mayor and would have helped a little bit, would have been if you subtracted the $116 that the Anthony Wayne Bond referendum cost per taxpayer, subtracting that, as Mr. Moffett did, from the $370,000, you might have tempered it down a little bit. I, I may or may not have mentioned, my idea would have been, instead of talking about a single assessed value, average, one might have done some homework and found out how many thousand condominiums we have in the town and identified a average assessed value for condominiums and told those people, you're going to cost X amount of dollars. Would have been 370, anywhere near that. If you did the same thing with the number of apartments and apportioned it down to what the apartment owner might pay, to how much per month in rent that it would cost a renter who has kids in the school, you might have done a better job. According to the newspaper, 19.4% of the people voted. There's a message there. What do all these other people do? Do they care? They don't bother to even come out and it's going to hit them tax-wise, and yet they're all about their business. Some of that business we saw at the township meetings over an innocently projected resolution, attempting to give support to Israel. And we were invaded by a group that was against that. They're thinking about those kind of things. I don't know if they don't think about money, what they earn or they don't earn.
Gabriel, time's up.
Okay.
You can come back. We let you come back here.
Okay.
Okay. Do I have a mover on the agenda? Mr. Batterhill?
Was that to vote to close?
Mr. Paul.
Oh, Mr. Paul, to close?
Yeah, to close and to move the agenda. Any discussion on the agenda? See none? Roll call?
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamondry?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Wentic?
I say yes, but I reserve the right to have comments on the budget before it's final
Mr. Batterhill?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I will do retirements now. Mr. Paul, start with you. Yeah, you do.
All right, I have two retirements this evening. First, Steve Hopper. Mr. Hopper began teaching in Wayne in October of 2002. He previously worked for a local Pontiac dealership, starting as a salesman, then a service advisor, to finally the manager of the body shop. Mr. Hopper began his educational career by teaching automotive skills to adults in night school at a local school. Mr. Hopper's knowledge and expertise helped create a thriving auto technology program at Wayne Hills. Along with Mr. Bergen at Wayne Valley, he helped create dual enrollment courses for college credit, an annual end-of-year celebratory auto show, an advisory board overseeing the advancement of the program, and helped students pass industry-standard ASE certification programs for students that have led to scholarships and careers in auto technology. His passion for auto and his genuine desire to help people, especially his students, is evidenced by all the accolades his students and program have received, the respect that he has in the Wayne schools and the Wayne community, and by the sheer amount of auto alumni that continue to be part of the program. Mr. Hopper plans to continue to get up early, start a new business, clear out his collector cars, some of which are rumored to be in, stored in an aircraft hangar, to buy more and see things he has never seen before. Second, Joyce DeLaGatta. Mrs. DeLaGatta has retired from Wayne Hills after serving over 25 years in the district. She was a substitute at the board office for six years and has been the She was a substitute at the board office for six years and has been the mother of Wayne Hills for 21 years. She is the very definition of professionalism. She honed those skills by working for many years on Wall Street, working with municipal bond salesmen at E.F. Hutton and Dean Witter. Mrs. De La Gata is the school's first and only choice when you need an answer. She knows how to do everything, where to look for everything, and the answer to every question. The question does not even have to be work-related. Go Ask Joyce is now the equivalent to checking on Google. She is thoughtful, always kind, forever patient, and eager to help students and staff. There will never be another Joyce, and the Wayne Hills community is grateful to have been blessed by such a nice person. Joyce is looking forward to relaxing and traveling with her husband and daughter, as well as her friends.
So I'm going to continue on from Mr. Hopper because this one is very related. This one is Mr. Ken Bergen. Mr. Ken Bergen started his career at Wayne Valley High School in 1995 after a successful career in the automotive repair industry. Over the past 29 years, he has served students of Wayne. Mr. Bergen's role as an educator has been second to none. His knowledge of the subject matter and pedagogical skill and love of students and their success are evident from the moment you walk into his classroom, which just happens to be a fully functioning auto repair shop. But what's most evident is his passion for students and his program. The automotive technology programs at both Wayne Valley and Wayne Hills High Schools have never thought of thinking without Mr. Bergen and his Wayne Hills counterpart, Mr. Steve Hopper. This is evidenced by when Bergen and Hopper bring their auto show to town. Rotated annually between Wayne Valley High School and Wayne Hills High School, you'll find the true impact of his career on full display. With current students running the entire event, past students showing off their cars, trucks, motorcycles, and almost any other vehicle you can imagine on campus. It's truly a sight to see and possibly the greatest testament to the impact an educator can have on so many. Mr. Bergen's impact will certainly be felt here at Wayne Valley for many years to come. You can almost always find Mr. Bergen's shop open to his students during lunch or after school as he is truly committed to providing opportunities for the kids. Whenever something is asked of him, whether it's a student looking to work on their car or a staff member who may have an issue, everyone is almost met with the Bergenism of, we'll see what we can do. The auto program, complete with classes, club, yearly auto show, and participation in the Sussex County Fair demolition derby, is an iconic part of Wayne Valley. Mr. Bergen is one of a kind. He raises students who often feel lost in academia up to a place where they can feel solid and confident about themselves. He gives students who may not be into math or science or English a home and a sense of self and success. But what is equally remarkable is that he has done all of this and more with a smile. Mr. Bergen, from your Wayne Valley and the entire Wayne Public Township Schools family, we wish you a long life and a happy retirement, and after giving so much to our family, we hope that you get to wear your permanent smile of joy in retirement with your family. In addition to that, Gina Bergen. After 18 years of dedicated service, Ms. Gina Bergen has decided to embark on a new chapter of her life, bidding farewell to her beloved role she has played as a first-grade teacher here at AP Tohoun Elementary School. Mrs. Bergen's journey with us has been nothing short of remarkable. Her passion for teaching and nurturing young minds has left an incredible mark on generations of students who have passed through her classroom doors. With a balance of rigor and care and endless patience and unwavering dedication, Ms. Bergen has not only imparted academic knowledge but also instilled in her students the values of kindness, compassion, and perseverance. In her time at our school, Mrs. Bergen has committed to helping her students grow into confident readers, writers, mathematicians by teaching them academic skills and study habits to find success after leaving her classroom. Her commitment to excellence has enriched our school community in countless ways and left a legacy that will endure long after her retirement. As we reflect on Mrs. Bergen's tenure, we are reminded of the countless lives she has touched and the countless hearts she has inspired. Her impact extends far beyond the walls of her classroom. While her presence will be greatly missed, we take confident knowing that she will get to enjoy her beautiful family and spend more time working in our garden and traveling. On behalf of the entire school community, I would like to extend our deepest gratitude to Ms. Gina Bergen for her years of dedicated service and unwavering commitment to education and well-being of our students. We wish her all the best as she embarks upon this new chapter of her life and hope that it is filled with joy, laughter, and countless memories of the lives that she has touched along the way.
Thank you. Mr. Giordano?
Thank you. I have two retirements. The first one is Ms. Lori Garofalo. Lori Garofalo has been a paraprofessional for the Wayne Township Public Schools for 24 years, 24, excuse me, 23 of those wonderful years in Pacanac Elementary. During her tenure, she has served in the capacity of a one-to-one, shared, and classroom paraprofessional. Ms. Garofalo always puts forth 100%, 110% in all she does during the school day to ensure student success. She treats everyone with kindness and respect. Ms. Garofalo is always willing to jump in and lend a helping hand. She has been an advocate for her students, promoting student independence while recognizing individual strengths and interests. She is a dedicated, patient, and extremely hard-working person. Thank you for your dedication to education as a paraprofessional. You will be missed. The Wayne Township Public School wishes you good luck in future endeavors. Enjoy your retirement with your family, friends, and two wonderful grandchildren. My second one is for Ms. Michelle Johnson. Michelle Johnson has been calling Skyler her home for the past 27 years and has been an educator for 34 years. Her career began for the first three years in New York, and then she moved to position in California for three years, and then on to Michigan for a year before settling at Skyler. The only year she did not teach special education was in Michigan, where she took over the LTR position teaching French, and Michelle has the unique experience of having taught first grade through high school in all subject areas. Michelle emulates everything it means to be a special education teacher. Her compassion for her students is felt in everything she does, the way she approaches every day. Michelle brings a smile to the faces of all the kids that know her and the connection she's made over the last 27 years in Wayne. For those students who may not have always been able to advocate for themselves is the legacy she will leave behind, what her students will always be grateful for. Her smile is contagious, her ability to bring smiles out of our kids in the way she jokes with them and gets right on their level with forever impactful on the way she views themselves and their abilities. Michelle is the epitome of what special education teachers should be. What Michelle will miss most about Skyler Day is dressing crazy for Spirit Days, playing the jingly bells with a band at the holiday concert, participating in the events at the Skyler Cup, the hula hoop event was her jam, and the DC trip when it poured rain the entire time and the year was 1,000 degrees. She will always cherish her lifelong friendships with coworkers, the goofiness of the kids and seeing her former students all grown up when they come back to visit or they sub at Skyler. We will not miss getting up at 5:00 a.m., and she will look forward to spending time relaxing at the lake, visiting her daughters in North Carolina, visiting national parks, and volunteering at her local animal shelter. Michelle is simply not replaceable and will be missed in the hallways and classrooms at Skyler. Wish you all the happiness, health, and good times in your next chapter. All the best.
Thank you. Mrs. Wintick?
Retirement notice for George Mitchell. George Mitchell will be retiring from the Transportation Department on June 30, 2024. George has begun his career as a bus driver on November 2, 1998. Over the course of his 25 years of service to the Wayne Township Public School, he has always been committed to his work responsibilities. George always took pride as being the first and the last person the students saw as they began and ended their school day. The Transportation Department and the Wayne Township Public Schools wish to express their sincere thanks and appreciation for his outstanding support and dedicated service. From all your friends and coworkers, congratulations, George, on your well-deserved retirement. As of today, no more stop and go for you, but instead, smooth sailing rides and rolling along to great places. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Lamondry?
Retirement, Ruth Ellen Smith. Ruth Ellen Smith has been a paraprofessional for Wayne Township Public Schools for 10 years. During her tenure, she has served in the capacity of a one-to-one, shared, and classroom paraprofessional. Whether working directly with an individual student or as part of a program working with more than one student, Ms. Smith always put students first and treated them all with kindness and respect. Ms. Smith has done an exceptional job at Pacanac to help and support all students who need support within her classroom. As Ms. Smith prepares for this next chapter, she will be missed by colleagues, teachers, families, and most importantly, her students. We would like to thank Ms. Smith for her contributions to our district and to our students and to the students she has assisted throughout the years. We wish you all the best in your future endeavors and much enjoyment in your retirement. Thank you.
First one, Deborah Padalita. Debbie Padalita, our cherished learning disabilities teaching consultant at Prenzis Early Childhood Center, is setting off into the sunset of her retirement. Debbie's heart and soul poured into every aspect of her work, touching many children and families' lives. With her unique blend of expertise, compassion, and dedication, she's been a guiding light for students finding their way through the challenges of learning disabilities. Debbie's work extended far beyond the classroom walls. She was a mentor who left a lasting mark, a voice advocating for inclusive education, and a friend who stood by all of us. Her relentless advocacy was paved the way for a bright future to all students. She transitions into a new chapter. Debbie looks forward to spending her cherished moments with her family, embracing the joys and togetherness that her busy career often made difficult to find. She is also excited to hit the golf course, a passion she's been eager to return to, where she can enjoy the peace and challenge of the game amidst nature's beauty. Her legacy at Prenzis Early Childhood Center is profound and enduring, a testament to her incredible impact. While we'll deeply miss her presence, we're thrilled for her to embark on this retirement filled with family, golf, travel, and the pursuit of happiness. Congratulations, Debbie, on your inspiring career, your bright adventure-filled retirement ahead. You've changed the lives in ways that words can hardly capture and inspired us to dream bigger and reach further. Here's to your next chapter, which will be as rewarding and enriching as your incredible journey you shared with us. And finally, Mr. Brian Watson. Mr. Watson has served the Wayne Valley community for the past 25 years and over that time has impacted the lives of countless students at Wayne Valley. As a role model for students and staff, Mr. Watson dresses for success on a daily basis as his dapper suit and tie are the norm, as he's rarely seen in the halls without them, except, of course, on the last day of school. Over his career, Mr. Watson helped to develop multiple advanced placement programs for our students. He has inspired many students proceeding into the field of psychology after taking his class. In fact, former psychology students say he may be better at explaining difficult concepts than their college professors. In addition to this, he has taught AP history curriculum while encouraging students not only to study history but to pursue their professional studies in the legal field. Mr. Watson's love of culture and music shines through his instructional methods and are greatly enjoyed by his students and readily shared with his colleagues. Students and staff always look forward to him sharing stories from his latest traveling experience, particularly after extended breaks from school. Unfortunately for us, his time has come to hang it up and see what tomorrow brings, and there will be nothing left to do but smile, smile, smile. Mr. Watson, you will be missed. Your ability to nurture professional trusting and open relationships with our entire team is truly appreciated. When asked, you shared your insightfulness in regards to large and small challenges. Your experience as an educator, a union representative, and a community advocate has been invaluable to our entire school community. As an alumnus of Wayne Valley High School, your passion to teach your students, to mentor fellow teachers for the betterment of the Wayne Valley school community is second to none. Mr. Watson's numerous conversations about making our world a better place for students, teachers, and staff was frequently followed with the reference to George Bernard Shaw's famous words, "You see things, you say things, why? But I dream things that never were, and I say, why not? You always ask, why not? And for that, our Wayne Valley High School community is better for it. Mr. Watson, we wish you a long life and a happy travels in your retirement." To all our retirees, our heartfelt gratitude for your dedicated service to the Wayne School community and your commitment to the excellence has made a lasting impact on countless lives. Thank you to all. This time, I'm going to open the meeting to the public for general comments. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under old business. Do I have a mover?
Move.
Mr. Giordano? Mr. Batterhill?
Stuart Resmer, 82 New Street. The gentleman mentioned the letters he gets. Some of us have been getting letters like that for years. They arrested a guy down in Westwood, New Jersey, Bruce Cummings. He signed off on the letters, "Truth hurts." His letters never really made a threat, but the undercurrent was there, if I could say that. To sign it off as "Truth hurts" was kind of alarming. Maybe you've gotten some letters like that or some of these emails that are going around. I wouldn't know. At the risk of repeating myself, last night's council meeting was more like a mud wrestling contest when it came to the school board and the referendum discussion. Councilwoman Ritter is kind of alone on that council, and she advocates for this district. She has a couple of times, and every time she does, the usual offenders, the usual suspects start in on her, and you owe her a debt of gratitude. You need to give her your support when you encounter her or if you listened to that meeting last night. They do it every time. They insult her, they abuse her, they abuse us who come to the microphone. It really is a mud wrestling contest, and I don't know who they think they are sometimes when they speak to people like that. You and I have had a moment or two of friction along the way, but we can still bump into each other in the hall, you know, and talk about things and move along. It's not personal, even though anything I can say or do will be held against me in your line of work, and believe me, I know it. So they went through this whole thing last night. Mrs. Kazan went up and she made some remarks about the mayor's inaccuracy, about some of the things he said in his slides. Mrs. Puttup boiled the thing down to a $6 million difference in these numbers. And then the mayor started right back in it again, damn near calling them liars, disputing everything. So I would ask you, what is the truth in these numbers that Mrs. Kazan represents and these numbers that this man comes back with? We've got two different stories here. Now, I know who I believe because that woman has spent 10 years doing this, and you know her better than I do in executive session and everything that you do. That woman's got an eye for detail, and if she says this is the number, I'm inclined to believe it. He talks in general terms, in the old blake way, you know, like a politician he is. The man's a 24-hour campaigner. I believe in term limits. I would like to see him go. I would like to see us get a referendum on term limits and get that man out. Mr. Pavlik, you've been here a number of years, nothing personal, but I'd like to see term limits applied to you, too. I'd like you to get on with your life and do the things you'd like to do, and I think you are committed here, although along the way, I've disagreed with some of the things you've said and done. Of course, you agree with everything I say and do, so, you know, Mr. Giordano, we don't agree on the NRA, but I respect you being here, the same for the rest of you. Mr. Faber, I give a rip less about, by the way. That night, he jumped up here and made that threat against Mrs. Kazan coming to her house? That was uncalled for, that was unnecessary. He doesn't deserve to sit there, no more than just Drebsky deserves to sit on that council after what he said to that woman in front of her minor daughter that went on the internet, that outrageous conduct. These people are out of control. These people are out of control at council. The things they say to, again, Mrs. Ritter, Ms. Ritter, I'm sorry, the things they carry on with, it's uncalled for. They're here to do the people's business, not to settle scores, not to insult one another, but yet that's what they do. So as you continue in what you're doing, some of you wrote here to this office during our summer of discontent over the books, over all these things, the culture wars as it's called. Well, you've inherited a hot potato now. You've got this referendum that failed, and to some of us, it's like poetic justice, it's karma, it's something like that, but you've still got to wrestle with it. You've still got to make this work somehow, some way. I'm not here to condemn you, I'm not here to make trouble for you. I'm here to say, Mr. Klipka, for instance, did you ever think you'd miss that man come in here and, you know, make a point of order about a detail? I'm here to kind of do that. I'm here to say, hey, wait a minute, what about this and that and the other thing? I'm not here to take you guys down on anything. I'm not. I guess that's my bell, huh? Or was that my?
Thank you.
Suzanne Puttup, 23 Tuxedo Drive. I forgot to say thank you. I know all the work that went in to preparing this referendum, not just the regular meetings. There were retreats, there were extra meetings, there was extra work. I thank our administration and our school board for all the hard work that was put in. Mr. Moffett, your department does an excellent job, and your leadership along with Dr. Toback's is extraordinary. Thank you.
Jim Frieswick, 1212 Summer Hill Road. I came down here to talk about the referendum, but since I'm here, I'm going to reiterate a request that I made to the Board some time ago. I think we need to teach the Arab-Israeli conflict in our high schools. I think what you ought to do is ask the Director of Secondary Education to come up with a curriculum for an AP course, an advanced placement course, just concentrating on the Arab-Israeli conflict, which has been going on close to 100 years now and which is currently raging in the Gaza Strip with 30,000 dead so far and 2.2 million people on the verge of famine. I think it's important, the United States is involved in it, has been involved for 75 years, and I think it ought to be a course that's offered an elective, at least, in an advanced placement course. I presume that it's being taught in everyday American history courses as current events. I presume we're still teaching current events in our United States history courses in high school? I enjoyed that the most. I majored in history and political science in college, and I was inspired by my American history teacher, Thomas Zaccardi, my favorite teacher in high school. And so, yes, I think it's important that we teach that particular piece of not only United States history but world history in our high schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe sometimes people don't say it, but I'll say it. I come here to listen and to find out what's happening with my tax dollars. It's that simple. I have to say, I compliment you guys, girls, having made these references to people who have served this system and are retiring. I never heard that before at a Board of Education meeting. That's really, really nice. And I'm sure those people, and maybe the people who subsequently see this on some TV station, they will appreciate that too. My concern as a citizen here is that we have two general branches of government in our town, the Board of Education and a town council. It distresses me that you would be at odds on anything, and despite the disagreement in the content of the bond referendum, I think that you guys and gals should be getting together with the mayor. If you get all your votes and you get all his votes, the chances of getting something passed is pretty good. Despite the fact that I understand we have about 51,000 citizens in Wayne and 42,000 of those people vote, the others are probably either underage or not citizens, but it sends me to see that only 19.4% of the people care enough about their kids' education. Aside from them saying, okay, here's your lunch, go to school, get out of here, you're out of my hair for the day and I'm going to go make a buck, what do they really think about education if they don't bother to come and vote on something like a referendum? Anyway, let me just close by sharing something that I've tried to live by all my life, and it might address some of the viewpoints that you hear. Among the equipment of men, I know of nothing more sensitive than that which enables one to know when another is insincere. And among the reactions of men, I know of nothing more inevitable than revolt against insincerity. Never deceive yourself about your ability to deceive others. Insincerity will kill a human relationship more quickly than arsenic will take a life. Good night.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the public wishing to speak?
Seeing no one, I'm going to leave to close.
Mr. Batterell.
Second.
Mr. Paul. Board member, Dr. Toback? Oh, donations.
Our first donation is from March 7, 2024. James Fallon Elementary School received a donation from James Fallon PTO in the amount of $2,796 to be used towards the 5th grade field trip to Liberty Science Center. Also on March 7, Ryerson Elementary School received a donation from the Ryerson PTO in the amount of $340 to be used toward the cost of a 1st grade field trip. On March 7, Ryerson Elementary School received from the Ryerson PTO a donation to be used towards the cost of 2nd grade field trip in the amount of $350. And on that same day, Wayne Valley High School also received a donation from Insera Supermarkets. The donation is to be used for the Italian Studies Program in the amount of $11,000. Thank you.
Thank you, and to all those who donate, especially to our PTO, who, without them, I don't know where we would be, and I really do appreciate all your hard work and everything that you do do. Dr. Toback, any comments?
So I'd just like to take a moment to congratulate all of our retirees. I mean, we heard a lot about them tonight. Wish all of them many years of health and happiness in their retirement. That is an all-star crew that will be very difficult to replace. Their accomplishments are many, and it was a very nice thing with the Board, having an introduction to the retirees and for the community to get a sense of what a loss they will be for our community. So for the people who came up to speak tonight, for the most part, you made statements, and so it made it easy. There's no questions, other than we'd like to respond to Mr. Frieswick. Just like to make you aware that the Arab-Israeli conflict is taught in world history, and it was taught in early February. So that's where it was taught at both high schools for students who are in world history class.
Thank you. Board member comments, I'll start to my right. Mrs. Lamandry.
Well, first of all, good evening. I wanted to thank everybody who approached the podium tonight and spoke with regards to support of the referendum, and many of you commented on the work that was put into the referendum by both the board members here and the administration. And whether you voted for it or against it, yes or no, I hope that every single person who voted used the resources that were available and voted with their questions answered, with all the resources we, there were so many different avenues to check or to have your questions answered, so it's, you know, it's a bit disturbing, but we'll see what happens next. I also wanted to thank Mr. Moffett for your presentation of the budget, and again, trying to figure out the dollars and how we're going to allocate those funds and where we're going to have to cut and where we're going to have to make some adjustments. I think it's very important that everybody understands the fact that things still need to be done regardless of this condition of the referendum at this point. Things still need to be done, and they will be done, but other things will be affected by that. And with regards to the retirees, oh my goodness, how great is that, that we all get to read a little blurb about somebody who served the community in the classroom with students, the future of our country, right, and made a difference in their lives? I think it's beautiful, and it's my honor to read about them. So I'm thankful for that opportunity. Thank you.
Mrs. Wintek.
Thank you. Also, congratulations to the retirees with a fun time in your life to finally not have to work. I think that's amazing, and thank you for all the work that you did. With regards to the referendum, I'm disappointed all around. I was disappointed by the ambush, how we were very surprised to learn all these different things, and what more disappointing it was me going to the, not this past meeting, but the previous meeting before the referendum of the council chambers, and the behavior I saw from the people who were sitting here and over there. There was one member, council member, who spoke about the support, and then she was referred to as "she," and I took a, I took a big offense to it because she has a name, Ms. Ritter. And we're not always on the same page. We were while she was speaking. She saw the need, why we needed to do what we needed to do, and I thought it was very disrespectful. So for the future, for any disagreements, we take pride on being here, and we should always do it with kindness. So, thank you.
Mr. Giordano.
Thank you. First, I want to say to all the retirees, congratulations. I'm coming with you soon. I don't know what I'm going to do, but I'll be with them soon enough here, so I'll get to enjoy that ride also. To the administration and especially Mr. Moffett, all I can say is I'm sorry. I'm sorry for what you're going to have to go through for the next weeks and months into years. You better get your court jester outfit on because you're going to be in a lot of juggling, and no matter what we move or what we cut or what, we're always going to be wrong for doing this. So I'm truly sorry for, you're going to have to really earn your paycheck on this one, Bill, I'm sorry about that, but you always do a yeoman's task anyway. Mr. Frieswick, you talked about making an Arab-Israeli AP class. Just as an educator, to clear things up, AP courses or advanced placement courses are placed out by the AP Testing Corporation. It's a national curriculum that we adhere to because if you teach an AP class, it's got to be taught everywhere, it has to be tested everywhere. It's a wonderful idea to make it an honors class, it's a wonderful idea to make it just an elective, but to actually make it AP is a totally different animal in these cases. So, great idea, I like the idea of doing it, but just you can't tack on AP for stuff. It's a very, very rigid program. In fact, it starts in August, and I know a great many science teachers who walk in the first day of school and say, hi, you're three weeks behind, let's go. And they've got to literally make up, they'll do work over the summer times, they'll start them in mid-August, they'll get them books ahead of time, so it's a real challenge because it's a national program. So, just to give you a little clarification on that, somebody mentioned, I think it was Mr. Resmer, he and I don't see eye to eye and everything, but I do respect you. Thank you for your service to our nation through your, being a Vietnam vet. Thank you so much for what you've done for us. We may not see the eye to eye, but one thing I'll do say is, I'm not going to turn this into the Wayne Board of Vergano. I'm really not interested in what a man has to say any longer here. I'm not interested in him coming and holding his hat. I think we'll probably give him an invitation. I don't think he's got the guts to show up for it, but if he wants to come in, you know, spray us with his wonderfulness and then walk out the door cheering like Caesar, that's up to him, but I've got nothing, nothing a man's got to say is going to work here. There's a $60 million shortfall, what are you going to cut? We did bare bones, we did it as quick as we had to. Gabe over there, I understand 169 million's a lot, it's down to 139, but that's gone because we can't use the state money at this point. So my question, anybody of the 5,000 people who voted no, is, I'll give you the list, what do you want to cut? And it's not just, what are you going to cut on this list because the stuff on that list, we got to do, so in order to do those, what are we going to cut? So good luck with that.
Mr. Batterell.
Sure. Mr. Masiola, first of all, if people are sending you letters, just be aware, if people are sending you letters, just be aware, we're still listening. If you come up to this podium, we're still listening to anybody that comes up here that is public input, and so we're still paying attention to that. So I appreciate you coming back and continuing to speak your mind because that is important to us, that's part of an open democracy, and I think we need to continue being able to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Paul. Obviously disappointed the referendum didn't pass. I think I'm more disappointed in the lack of voting. I think as a community, we have to do a better job of getting out there. Every vote does count because when 10,000 people decide not to vote, all those votes might have been a big difference. So I just think moving forward, we have to do a better job in getting out and voting one way or the other, but just everybody getting out there. On the retirements, congratulations to all the teachers. I wish I would have looked through the pile a little bit better before I picked, not that my people were any worse, but I actually had Mr. Bergen his first year. And I remember going in his class, and about two weeks in, I was a little bored with the curriculum. We weren't moving as fast as I wanted to, and there was a 1971 Pinto parked outside the auto shop that was, probably hadn't moved in about 10 years. And I said, "Mr. Bergen, I want to get that thing running." In his first year, he could have said, "No, I don't have time to worry about that, we have a class to teach here." And he said, "Mr. Paul, if that's what you want to do, go do it." By the end of the year, there was about four of us working on it, and we got it running, and it was a great experience, so, Mr. Bergen, thank you.
We're all disappointed with the results of the referendum, but this board is committed to quality education, and we do recognize our financial stewardship of public funds. While the referendum wasn't successful, we do remain dedicated to finding solutions, and we're going to have to find solutions because some of these problems are not going away. Similarly, you know, we're committed to maintaining our schools. With a 2% budget cap, it's hard. That's why we try to pair these projects with grants from the state, and there's not a lot of grants out there. School Construction Commissioner, whatever they're called today, they just said, we're almost out of money. So, you know, we have a community that's booming. We have condos and townhouses and single-unit family houses going up all over the town, and especially on the upper side of the town. I spoke about this four years ago, and people told me I was crazy. Guess I'm not. Practice school is a major component in this. And I forget who it was who said, "Before you start building schools, you better fix what you have." We're trying. And I know, Gabe, you said about suing the contractor. The problem is, from my understanding, the contractor's no longer in business. So we're stuck holding the bag on this one. The path forward's not going to be easy, folks. Tough decisions are going to be made, and we're going to do them with transparency, without a doubt. There's going to be challenges that we face. It's not going to be business as usual. Unfortunately...
Unfortunately, when you go out for a referendum, we can't tell you what the consequences of it not failing are. We can't even tell you to vote yes for it, but this is New Jersey. We have laws like that. We're going to work collaboratively, and we're going to embrace the innovation that we need to have. We understand that some members of the community, including the mayor, express his concern over the recent referendum. So to foster open communication, Mr. Mayor, I will invite you publicly, and I will follow it up with an email, to attend our April 4 public work session, and we're going to put it on the table, and you can talk to us and we can talk to you. Hopefully, it'll be a valuable opportunity for all of us to get together and talk about it. We had umpteen meetings, as Mrs. Puttup said, about the referendum and the projects, and maybe a handful of people ever showed up, and they're all publicly announced, so it's not like we're doing something behind somebody's back. There were, every one of them was in this, was in Wayne. A couple of times, we had retreats at the Hilton Garden Inn in Wayne because we're putting long hours doing it. So hopefully, on April 4, our architect will be here, along with our bonding council and some other professionals we have, to talk about the reality of it now. The reality of it is you've lost a lot of money from the state, and we don't know if we're going to get it back with where they are now, because as Dr. Toback said, a simple change requires it to go back to the county, to the state, for approval. And no, I'm not going to cut the, I'm not going to cut it short and say, well, you know what, we're really cutting the money really close, let's go along with what the architect said now, because you have to remember, if we go out to a referendum hypothetically next March, you think prices are going to be the same as they are now? I doubt it. So you have to account for that. So everything has to go back to the state, there's no guarantee on the funding, you cut the referendum to $100 million, you're not getting the same amount of funding. And out of the $44 million for pregnant school, they didn't pay a lot. I wish I had, like, the stake where I could get $300 million and, hey, go build a new school. Taxpayers in here would be jumping up and down. You know, we look at places like Jersey City and New Brunswick that the state is, that we're all paying for. The state doesn't pay for anything, we all pay for it at the end of the day. There's more businesses in Jersey City now than probably in New York City. How much are they contributing towards the schools in Jersey City? Why are we still flipping the bill? Same thing in New Brunswick. You go down to New Brunswick, and you go along Eastern Avenue, you go along George Street, they're building every place, high rises, but yet we're all paying for every child's education down there. How can it be? How can we have this funding formula that gives us 8%, 8 cents on a dollar we get back from the state? I don't hear people complaining about the county taxes. Go ride down Valley Road, good luck. There was a pothole a couple of weeks ago, a dump truck would have fallen into. We need to get together in this community and start fighting the things outside the community that are hurting us, telling our representatives in Trenton, "Give us our money back, give us our fair dues so you're not paying and we're not paying 90% of the school taxes in this town and every other town along with it." So hopefully, I invite you all to, on April 4, to come on down, and as I said, we'll have a bunch of professionals there, and we're going to be talking about the budget, and there's going to be cuts coming within the next month, and some of them, people are not going to be happy about. I'm not happy about giving up on the science labs already, but unfortunately, it's just the way it has to be right now. With that, I'll take a motion to...
Move to close.
Mr. Paul and Mrs. Wintek. Good night, everyone.
Good night.